Apparently they've returned.
All right.
Those and recoupons.
of the New Market School Board. Caitlin, if you would lead us in with allegiance, I would appreciate it.
My pleasure.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin this meeting, I will, going back to our policy, read our mission statement of the district as is supposed to be done at all meetings. The New Market School District is committed to the highest standards of quality education. We ensure a safe and successful learning community. We embrace diversity and respond to the social, emotional, intellectual, and physical needs of every child. We strive to work with the broader community to ensure that students develop lifelong skills, enabling them to be contributing and productive members of society. The first item on our agenda tonight is approval of radio system. School Board members, and Greg, if you want to come up, we might have some questions for you, but just sort of from the information.
I wasn't expecting you to do that.
I'm sorry, I'm not prepared.
Yeah, we can make some quick work of this. From what I got from your memo, Greg, we have an aging communication system that is not really up to Homeland Security specifications currently. Is that?
Yeah, the existing system we have actually was phased out of being supported in 2014. And so, one of the problems I have is I can't even get parts for them. I was able to get some batteries through eBay that were used to kind of get us moving. So unfortunately, it's just not something that we can really work with at this point. Additionally, we didn't have a system that'll allow us to communicate between schools or the SAU. So they're really more of like just a general walkie-talkie. So you're within a given range. So this new system actually has repeaters and is connected so that one school can talk to the other school, especially in an event of emergency. It's actually a full FCC licensed, which we've been granted the license through the FCC already for. So it's actually a very comprehensive.
So is that like our own radio channel or something?
Yes, it is our own. We own our own frequency, if you want to call it that. It's actually authorized section four, yes.
Just to clarify, this was part of the Homeland Security audit conducted a couple of years ago, well, year and a half ago, and part of the grant that we applied for and received last year. So that covers about 80% of the costs of the radio system.
Okay.
Yes.
And Greg, from what I saw, there were five proposals that came in, and you suggest that we, you recommend that we authorize the superintendent to engage Belltronics of Nashua. From what I could tell, they were the least expensive bid.
And actually, we actually conducted interviews with the number one and number two submissions to basically qualify both bids and whether or not they would meet our needs. And at the end of it, Belltronics did actually provide more services for a better price.
And they'll be able to support us moving forward?
Yes, yes.
I just had a question about Belltronics. Did they give you, on a separate document, the specifics of the units and things? I noticed that the other submission had specifics of the brand names and the unit prices.
Is it all Motorola system for all of them?
The Belltronics radio is actually a higher version than the two-way communications version, which was one of actually the things that we liked because in the Belltronics version of the Motorola radio that they spec'd, it has what's called a stun and kill feature. So if one of the radios came up missing or stolen, we actually can shut the radio down completely. So it won't have that access to our systems. Whereas that was an option that we would have to purchase additional on the two-way system. And that was really something we really liked as part of it. But they are all Motorola-based systems.
So Greg, if I'm reading this right, their bid amount was $41,364.
Correct.
And the grant will pay $29,860. So out of the owner's funds, we would get the $11,504.
Right, because we did have funding that was in that in our original scope of the construction project for communications.
Okay.
I noticed you have the chief and the bar chief here. Are they part of the system? Do they connect as well?
The radios will have certain authorized radios that will actually be tied directly to dispatch.
They have access to our channel.
They have access.
Not everyone will have access to them because we shouldn't.
So we, so it's interconnectivity, is I guess.
Yes.
So if there's a fire somewhere or?
For us, what it really means is it gives, for instance, principals will have that ability to talk directly to the dispatch, our own dispatch center. So for, in a crisis, it's a real quick notification.
SRO.
SRO will already have their radio systems anyways, and it will have that frequency tied in.
So this is just, I got you.
For an update.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I seek a motion to authorize the engagement of Belltronics of Nashua for the replacement of the radio system. The total amount is $41,364, $29,860 of that will come from a Homeland Security grant, and the remainder will come from owner's funds.
So move.
Second, I have a motion from Mr. Zink with a second for this offer. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we will vote in favor of doing this motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Wow, thank you. That was awesome. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a wonderful evening.
The next thing is not on the agenda, but I just noticed that the manifest are here with us tonight.
We don't need to approve them tonight. We just brought them for signatures.
We have seen, so we will approve them next week, or at the next business meeting on the sixth. Any other items for the special business meeting? Hearing none, we will adjourn that and move into the budget work session. Meredith and Lisa, you gave us some updates for our binders this evening. Would you like to start with those, or how would you like to proceed?
Sure. So we've given you multiple. We'll start at the very beginning with number one, which is the update to the budget summary and function. As discussed last week, we made the insurance changes. We also put in the transfer to food service to cover the benefits that you can see at the bottom, 52-51.
So one replaces?
The tab one in your binder. Those both go in the first tab.
Section one.
In section one, the first yellow.
Just one sheet, is that correct?
Nope, both sheets that have, that were together.
It's a staple set and a single sheet.
Oh, okay.
And then you'll see a two.
Yep.
And they go to the different tabs.
And the single sheet goes where?
In the very front.
The front of one.
The front of one, gotcha.
In front of or behind the tab one?
They're replacing your prior, so I would put them in front.
And two is replacing?
Tab two.
Two, crap. I got you, okay.
So just, I'll let you finish.
Okay, what's the next one?
One, two, three, four, five.
Oh, for some reason, I've got extra sitting here. Okay. Thank you for not making fun of me.
Lisa, can I just go back to last week when we talked about, honest to God, I don't understand this. So when we talk about transferring the funds from our budget into the school funding, because we can't end in a negative balance?
Oh, for food service.
Food service. So that's just because we can't end in a negative balance? And that's why we transfer those funds?
Yeah, yeah. Food service has to be self-sustaining, so they have to be a break-even business in the end. And generally, you will carry three months of reserves. And we're getting to that place where it's starting to turn because of people's opportunity to elect health insurance, where it hasn't either been budgeted or hasn't been chosen in the past. So it's trending higher for those expenses, where 60% of it is salaries and benefits, and the other 40 is the food cost. So that's your food service.
So if you look at that revenue chart that Lisa brought last week, you can see our revenue, our balance, fund balance was continuing to deplete. We're projecting that at the end of this year, we will have depleted that, we'll have to pay in, we'll have to transfer funds at the end of this year. And because we will have nothing in reserve next year, we're projecting a $40,000 fund transfer based on the food cost projections and the labor projections.
Yeah. I left it, I was just like, what just happened?
Oh, it's, yeah, it's, so even if your revenue stayed the same, your expenses are going up.
And so we're going to have to do this anyways.
Yeah, eventually, that's what happens.
Now, how many full-time employees do we have in the food service?
Full-time?
Full-time?
Three.
Yeah, the manager.
And that includes the director?
We have director, two kitchen managers.
And the rest are all part-time?
Yeah, yeah.
And that's 32 hours a week, or even less than that?
Part-time is less than that.
Yeah.
Al, did you have a question?
Yeah, but I've got it solved.
Okay.
Are we ready for tab one for the summary?
Yep.
So again, reviewing the changes that we discussed at the last meeting, we added the fund transfer for food service. We made the adjustments for health insurance that we had discussed based on the health elections. And so you see the new subtotal at the bottom, $550,279, or 3.09% increase. Once you adjust for the principal and interest on the bond, it's a $545,895 increase, or 2.74% over last year. And so tabs two, three, and four, just, those additions just show you those changes. And that, so if you track across the health insurance lines and the fund transfer, you'll see those, the line item detail for those.
And is the food service split between the two buildings, or is it just in the SAU?
Food service is a standalone fund, a separate fund.
It's a standalone, yes, yes.
Fund 21, 22.
I apologize for that question.
No, no, but we'll get to that because I have an updated revenue sheet for you, too. In tab five, we received today our enrollment update from Nesdeck. If you look at the very last sheet that they provided, just cover it up here somewhere. There you go. The very last page was a note from the demographer who did the study, just noting that their forecast for this year fell within 14 students of what they had projected. They're saying the current number of births is about 20 per year, which has declined over the prior decade, yet you've seen some family increase. They're projecting a shrink in grades K through five by a total of 19 children over three years. So, you know, six children a year potentially decline in grades K through five. So that's just a summary of that. So.
We've had 30 new students this year so far, correct?
No, we're up over last year by only two. So we have student, we do have new students arrive, but we also have students who leave. And so our total net gain in students is really only a difference of two.
On the student enrollment, now that I've screwed up my entire book here, I could just, I could just talk through it, I guess. I went back to two and three budgets ago to see how close we came on projections, and we, wherever they came from, they were not particularly accurate. And this one, and I'm not sure, by the way, it affects the budget, because I don't think the enrollment, except in one case, was really focused on increase in staffing. But this one showed, oh crap. Let me just talk. Based on the enrollment projections we had on table five.
Yep.
Now we've got a new one, and I've lost, I've lost my notes on my overall.
I wouldn't call it a new one. I would call it the Nesdeck enrollment projection, which, again, we've looked at historically and not felt was accurate, which is why we do our own, which is more or less a rollover with some adjustments for historical trends. Which is the first sheet in tab five.
Yeah, that's, I thought. What's the increase in enrollment from this year, from, what's the forecast increase in enrollment?
For next year?
Yeah.
Well, we've got 11 students coming in at pre-K.
Yeah.
So that alone is an increase. Then you also have a graduating class of, so the net is going from 1064 to 1103. Your high school enrollment's projected to be up five students. It's your middle school enrollment that's going up about 20, because you have a small eighth grade class moving up and a large sixth grade class coming in.
It's the largest projected increase that we've had, is that correct? The largest projected over actual?
I mean, I can only tell you two years of history, so I don't know the answer to that. It's larger than last year, but we're also adding 11 students with a second preschool classroom, some of which will be tuition generating.
Okay. Well, that was, that was really trying to understand it because the, it's a more significant increase than we've experienced ever.
Yes, because you've had high school classes in the 60s that are moving up to classes in the 80s. That's part of the trend that you've been experiencing over the last few years.
And we have more space for preschool now, for pre-K, which we didn't do previously.
And I think the current seventh grade has been the biggest class that, or in a while, maybe ever, that it's been, it's gone down, but it was in the 100 range.
And your elementary classes have been sustained, at least in my time here, through kind of mid-80s.
Yep.
80 to 90, and that's, that's the trend that you're seeing move up from classes that you've had in the 60s.
Yep.
At the high school level, you're moving up to classes in the 80s. But again, Nesdeck is suggesting that that's going to level off over the next few years.
So our projections are taken from actual numbers in our classrooms, whereas Nesdeck is?
So they look at, they look at birth rates, they look at housing information, they look at your historical trends, they look at, you know, building permits issued. It's those kinds of factors that they look at.
Yeah, demographic, that's what I'm saying.
Correct. So this is the updated revenue sheet. Today, we received from the state updated adequacy numbers. This is tab seven in your binder. So you can see, if you start at the top, we've updated the general fund number with the number we just presented to you, $550,000. If you track down, we've also put in here transfer from, well, it says capital reserve, but really it's impact fees.
It was in prior years, in prior years there was.
That's the line when you last brought in impact fees that was used to budget for those. So we're, we're suggesting that you budget to have those impact fees, and that's also the recommendation of the Department of Revenue Administration, that you budget to have those impact fees come in as revenue in next year's budget. The intent would be that you spend them to pay off your bond principal and interest, and then seek reimbursement from the town once that expenditure is, is made. And that's historically how that's been done. If you continue down, next to last section is the adequacy aid grant. Again, we got that updated number from the DOE today. So we're looking at $2,466,968 in adequacy aid next year, which is an increase of $59,000 over current year funding. Which brings you down to the assessed value and the total projected tax impact. Again, the largest change to that is, is because you're bringing in those impact fees as offsetting The final item I have for you, and we haven't filled in any numbers, but we just brought for you the draft warrant. Sorry. So Article II would be your operating budget. And it actually on the back also says Article II, but it would be Article III.
That's a good thing, it's a draft, I say.
And again, our suggestion to you on Article III would be that you consider requesting, asking the voters to approve bringing the currently accrued interest from the bond into, into the district's funds for next year, so that you will have that available to you at the end of the project. And then, not yet there, but we hope to be adding, once, once that is settled, you'll be adding the teacher contract warrant article as well.
So all of those would be specifically enumerated there, okay?
Correct.
Apologize for the number order, but yes, there'll be another article in there for collective bargaining.
Okay.
We would hope, yeah.
And probably a second one that is statutorily, well, has historically been included in your warrants, which is that if the teacher warrant article should fail, it allows you to have a special meeting.
Starts the discussion and thought process, yeah.
And are we going to talk about the?
Default budget.
Thank you.
Is that what you were going to say?
Thank you.
Yes, because that needs to be prepared. Once it's, once I settle on what we're doing here.
Then we'll really.
But at the same time, I could, I just have, have time to do it. The default is a lot, primarily based on the prior year's budget anyways.
Right.
And any additions or subtractions from that. So it, a bit does matter what we do here, but primarily it's based on the prior year. So I'm going to start working that.
So the big thing for us to know on that default budget is that the way we report it out is different from what it's been previously. It's not going to move like the higher amount that it has historically.
Well, some of the pieces that you historically would have included in the default budget, such as your contractual increase in transportation costs, for example, cannot now be included under the change to the statutes in your default budget. So that 7% increase, right, on transportation costs would have to be deducted. You would have to, if your operating budget were to fail and the default budget became your, your budget, you would have to make up those costs from somewhere else within your operating budget.
Even though we have already contracted.
Even though you've already.
With the bus company for that additional 7%.
Yeah, there's a specific thing about contracts.
Correct. We're going to have to pull that out of someplace else.
So even though it's, it's not in that, so it's not in that default budget, we still have to pay in.
You're still obligated to pay in.
Yeah, we have an obligation.
So we have to make sure that people understand that's not a true number. Like, that's what we're going to have to get in front of.
Yep.
That's going to be a lot of talk. Because people, as you all know, look at the default and go, well, you know, it's higher than that, why would I vote for that? Now they're going to look at that and see something different.
And why did that change occur?
Because the legislature decreed it to be so.
Yeah, the law changed.
Specifically for that line item?
Yes, yes.
For the default budget.
Yes, default budget.
That line item for?
Not sure.
No, for the default budget.
The default budget overall. They made statutory changes that, that changed how you can delineate your default budget. So unless a contract has been, like, a teacher's contract would be specifically approved by the legislative body, the voters, you can't include it in your default budget. So.
Has to be in there once, and it's in, and then, yeah.
No, I think that this just, you know, and I'll go back to you in a second, Meredith, but I think it just speaks to the amount of communication that we're going to have to do with this, with this warrant coming up. Because we're going to have to, assuming that everything is, is agreed upon with the teacher's contract, then, you know, people might have some questions about that. We've been talking about, you know, maybe coming up with a one-page thing or different things to communicate these changes that people might see on the ballot when they go and march their own articles.
So those items that potentially would have to increase would be like the bus, bus contract, the, the teacher's contract. That's not going, we're not going to be able to face it on last year.
That's still a separate warrant article.
It's still a separate one, okay.
It'll be important to have a good deliberative session.
Yeah.
Where you can talk about those things, and people could understand what they're voting on when they go to vote.
Yeah.
And reiterate it at each of the, the meetings preceding that, so that people start.
Public hearing, the deliberative.
Oh, yeah, there's going to be a question about that when we get to the deliberative session. I really need to understand it there.
Correct.
Yes.
We need to get some key players talking about it, putting it on Facebook, doing, getting the conversation started, so that people, social media rules the world right now. So we need, if we can get it out there, people can start discussing it. We can get questions. People can come to public comments, ask the questions.
No, I think once we get, you know, things further along with the teacher contract, get this more finalized, we can get that going. I think it's an excellent idea. Meredith, anything to interrupt?
No, that's, that's all the updated information we have for you. Typically, we haven't prepared a default budget until you've approved.
Right.
An operating budget number.
The budget budget.
And then we bring you that with the, and this one, again, will have the delineated items that can't be included. So, I didn't have any other budget questions that came forward, so.
Any questions before we sort of, sort of a discussion about the budget?
What are, I'm still struggling with this. What are? What are, I'm still struggling with this, what are the delineated items that are no longer included?
Well, it's, it would be any, any other contracts that we would have in place. It's staffing that wasn't included in your prior budget. Any staffing positions that were slated to go away already wouldn't be included. Any new staffing. Trying to think of other specific categories. Those are the primary categorical changes. But if you think about contracts, right, if we have a service agreement contract that's going up two percent, or we have a fuel contract that's going up three percent, like, those pieces can't be included. Electricity, we would be only including what we paid this year for electricity, even if we know that our rates are going up fifteen percent. Or water sewer.
So, so, so starting, so let's work on utilities. So explain to me how that item would work.
We put in next, in the default budget, what we have in this year's budget. That's it.
Period. And what would we have done in the past?
We would have put in, oh, we've been told.
Five percent increase, or we have a contract that says it's going to go up next year. And by the law, you know, your per unit costs will be going up, but the default budget will only include the amount of the money that we appropriated the previous year. So I know the answer. Electric is electric.
So in the past, we've been able to say the default budget.
Electric rates are going up seven percent.
Judgment?
Yeah.
Or direct communication. We often know a lot of those ahead of time.
Say you don't. You could still put them in.
You, well, you've known what the trends have been.
That's interesting. I thought everything that was in the default budget was contracted.
There's a nice summary on the New Hampshire Municipal Association website. I can forward that to you. It's an article that I'll send to you all.
Just send it to all of us, if you would.
Yeah.
Cause that's something information to have.
Question and answer thing.
Yep.
And there are probably some things that are.
I mean, I pulled it up and it's. School Board Association.
Too.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that was included in materials I shared with you a couple of meetings ago.
So what's the intent of the legislation? Why, why do you think it was changed?
I, I don't want to speak for our legislators, but my understanding of the impetus for it was that people were comparing notes and felt that one town was doing things differently than another town, and they didn't like that.
Because, because it had that judgment factor.
And then there's the negative.
Because the way the law was written, boards had the discretion to make that, those determinations.
This is how terrible it is. I've been on the budget committee for ten years and I never understood it. I thought default budget was contracted.
No, it's at the discretion of the governing body.
And it is.
The board and the council.
The BA is gonna say, I'm just gonna throw an extra five percent on that. You know, it's, it's, they, they get ideas. Like, you know, if you're gonna have a.
And contracts. There, if, like, the bus contract.
Now that water and sewer is going up, you know, whatever percent next year in Newmarket, right, five-ish.
Generally, I would build in, knowing that.
But I'm not talking about our practice. I'm talking about how it could vary from town to town.
Say, having worked in different places, when I even came here, when we, last year, when you eliminate a position, say, or you add to a, a position in your budget, do you include that in your default or not? Different communities do it different ways.
It's all makes.
So there's a standard. But one of the good things that I've always done and we've always done is they were looking for the transparency. A lot of places didn't spell it out. But I, I have a template, I show it, and then you all decide what's in the default or what's not. And that's.
And it's the same template that the Department of Revenue Administration has provided, that we used in the past, that we will be using again.
Yep, yep.
Okay, oh, good. So the default budget presumably would be lower.
It will be lower.
Because the, like, in the bus contract, we're paying X.
Right.
Next year, it's X plus seven percent. We can't budget for that at seven percent in the default.
Water and sewer, we're paying X. Next year, it's X plus five percent. By all those pieces.
If you had a one-time expenditure, and from off the top of my head, I know we bought textbooks, that was a one-time thing. That's not gonna be in the default. It's going to come out.
So carrying it one step further, you know that the transportation expense is gonna go up seven percent.
Right.
And you know that because you've already signed the contract?
Correct, you did a multi-year contract.
Include. Is that right?
No.
No, there's a specific piece of the law that excludes those type of contracts till they're voted.
It's only contracts that voters have approved. So your teacher's contract.
I get that, but the transportation contract, we've approved it.
Correct, it doesn't matter.
Voters have done. The voters have not.
That has not been a warrant office.
I getcha.
So it's deceitful in a way.
Yeah.
Because we are obligated to pay it.
Have to pay the bus contract seven percent.
Right. And it's coming out of the education of the children.
Yeah.
So your challenge in a default budget is that you still have to meet all those contractual obligations, or you have to eliminate particular contracts.
Right.
Or attempt to renegotiate. But the reality is, you're not gonna renegotiate, for example, your water and sewer rates, right? You're gonna have to pay that. And so you're gonna have to find, alter in your budget, the difference in those expenses.
Well, I appreciate the explanation. The thing that, that surprises me a bit is something that you're contracted to. And the contract says it's gonna be seven percent. I get the water and sewer thing, because we're not, we don't know what it's gonna be, and we're just, I get it.
But you could have engaged in something that told you you will have a cap. It will not be any higher than this in the contract.
I get, I get.
Then, and once it's voted at the meeting to approve that contract for multi-years, then it's in. But if it hasn't been, then it's out.
Yeah.
So.
Give the fuel prices a jump.
Yeah, and I, I don't think that should be in the default, because we don't, we don't know what the fuel prices.
Actually, we often do. Usually, we have those rates locked in, and we present them to you for the year ahead. We usually lock it in before we approve the budget.
The quote for how much the, the plan will be for next year. We already know what that, it's a different thing, but, you know, we know the bus contract's gonna go up. We know the water and sewer's gonna go up by a certain percentage.
Yeah, but we can't include that.
Okay, thanks.
One of the things that I ask, any more questions before we start our discussion? Well, I'm sure we'll come up on them. One of the things I asked for at the beginning is sort of the tax impact of all this stuff that we're looking at. You know, if, if we were to keep the budget as it is at this, um, what is the number? Let me look at it. Nineteen, no.
The five forty-five.
Five forty-five increase year over year. What does that do to the tax? And, you know, my thought on, on this question is, you know, obviously, the, the, the most important thing that we do is provide the best education possible for our kids. But I think we, you know, given the fact that the bond payment has come to fruition and people are seeing the impact of that in their taxes for the first time in the whole way, and the teacher contract is coming up, I just wanna sort of have in my mind what impact this is gonna have on people as well, potentially.
Well, the, the, net assessed value for the town is seven sixty-two, one twenty-three, and in general, is the ten cent rule. If it, if you reduce by seventy-six thousand two hundred, that's generally ten cents.
Okay. And what is, in the revenue sheet, what were we looking at?
So from the bottom up, if you look from the bottom of the revenue sheet.
Yes.
You'll see the increase at thirty-five cents right now, but if you were to reduce it.
That's where the impact fees migrated in.
Right, right. Yeah, if you were to reduce it by, say, hundred, hundred and fifty, it would go down another, um,
Almost twenty cents.
Twenty cents, yeah.
Lisa, without regard to revenues, is the increase in the contract still four ninety-eight, ninety-four? Uh, increase in the budget?
Um, no, it's five five oh, two seventy-nine. On the latest summary sheet, if you look on your tab, tab one? Summary sheet, you see the difference there?
So it's five oh five?
Five five oh. And that includes that transfer that we talked about earlier for food service.
Yeah.
Significant that changed the numbers.
No, um, salary increases?
For teachers and not in, not included in this.
Anything else?
That will be a separate one article.
Anything else?
Not included?
Yep.
It's hard to say. I think everything, um,
Yeah, but it's, the only thing that isn't in here is the teacher contract.
Yep, accounted for.
Okay.
Um, you know, my sort of thought on it, and I've, you know, looked, listened to the presentations everyone's made, and, um, you know, I'm reluctant to get into specific things or specific items, so I don't feel like that's my purview. But I'm just wondering if it might make sense, and where we could talk about this, if we look at, if we were to say, let's reduce this budget by a hundred thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred fifty thousand dollars, what would that look like in terms of proposed changes to the budget and implications that way?
And then she comes back, and it's stuff that probably we wouldn't agree with, it might have impacts, then do we have another meeting? Or do we just say to her right now, listen, here's what we see. How, if we do, if we don't do A, B, C, and D, what's the impact on the kids? If there's, and that, that's the conversation starter. Like, how are these, the loss of any of these going to impact the kids? And then we kind of, then we get down to the dirt. We're gonna get in the dirt, because it's gonna happen.
I just, I, I would like to sort of stay out of the dirt as much as possible, because I don't want, you know, a decision that I might make to eliminate a fifty thousand dollar something might not be the best decision overall, because I don't have the whole picture and the educational vision. That's why I don't, that's why I tend to say, here's a number, see what can happen, as opposed to, here are some things. So that's just my different paradigm of going about it.
But then Meredith could say to us, listen, this is what I've seen. I've seen this full-time social worker and the impact.
And she may very well, she may say, she may say me.
And that's what I want, because then I, then we get to know, and then the public gets to know. And if she just, if we're looking at sheets and she's like, here's a hundred thousand, this is what I did. Again, not understanding the impact of what she's chosen. But if we have this discussion, the dirt, we all get to, to talk about it. We get to communicate it to the public.
I mean, I guess the question is, do we want to have her go through that exercise? Or not?
Us avoiding the dirt and having her come back and, and then us, I just don't want, listen, I'll be honest, I don't want to insult her and say, no, you know, we went through a tough time last year.
Exactly.
So if we have the discussion now, she can answer it. Cause I, all right, I'm gonna say right here, I'm saying to you, I'm looking at the full-time custodian. We have to make do with what we have right now. This is what we have to make do. Meredith's gonna say, well, Elizabeth, this is what, I'm telling you, I need this in here because, so that we can all discuss it.
I think you've heard most of those explanations from the administrative team when they came to do those presentations. And again, my preference would be, you give us a number, the administrative team goes back and takes a look at the big picture. And then we come back to you with recommendations. But I, whatever your preference is, we'll do.
I've had fifty years of budget experience with the same question being asked, almost, whether it was at Parker Brothers, or Coca-Cola, or any other place that, that I worked. The danger I saw with the, the two percent budget reduction, whatever it is, I don't think we're gonna face the issue here, but, but with, at least within the private sector, what happens is generally the stronger voice, VTS sales gets to keep and the VP of Finance doesn't. I don't believe that exists here. But it, it always did. The sales guy says, look, if you don't give me the five new sales guys, I'm not gonna be able to bring in the revenue. Finance guy has no wind. Because it's a, it's a staff situation. I went through and I identified three, four, five, six areas where I thought it should require some investigation. But if everybody else has not done that, or you don't wanna do it that way.
No, you absolutely can. I just, I just decided, since we got so nits and licey last time. I, but if, if that's not what, the, the pleasure of the board, then we'll do it the other way.
I think we've just gotta get a, a, a common understand. I mean, the easiest thing for us to do is say, reduce it by three percent. Just do it.
And that's what Kim's saying.
Yeah, I mean, that's, no, that's what Kim said.
Well, I'm saying that, but, but I'm saying that not just, just reduce it, we're voting on the new reduction. It's, we're, we're requesting this reduction, but come back to us with what that reduction is gonna mean. That, so it's like a two-pronged, as opposed to just knock off a hundred fifty thousand dollars, that's the end. It's, if we do this, what are gonna be the consequence? If we do a hundred thousand, or whatever the number is, what are the consequences potentially to the students of those actions?
My point is, I guess I can argue it either way. I really can. I mean, I've got on here, knock off the additional bus if it doesn't meet, if the bus load is now safe and it's adequate to get kids here on time, which I heard it was.
Right.
Or, and, and can we look at the different bus routes and see where that's going? And again, that's her. But that's when she can say to us, I've looked at it, I, I've determined this bus is necessary.
Yeah.
She says no, then, you know, gone, off the, off the budget. One less thing you have to worry about, right?
Problem I have, Elizabeth, is I could say, why are we putting a new nurse in for special ed? And I don't know enough about the subject.
Then I'd, I'd bring you there for the day, and you wouldn't ask that question again.
No, but I mean, that's one question I hit on here.
Absolutely. But that, and that's something I think she could answer. I mean, to understand, you know, because we don't know the needs at the special ed department right now. But I can tell you, there's toileting, there's feeding, there's changing, you know, there's things that maybe only one person can't do. Maybe it can be knocked down to halftime, who knows? But again, that's a discussion we need to, to have.
Those kinds of things have HIPAA obligations on them, so we aren't going to know the specifics of those. We just leave that to.
There's just changes.
There are changes, right.
Very, we can say the words.
I think the, the kinds of things we might have been putting on are salary increases. Cause that's, that's really, that's really an organic cerebral sort of, sort of discussion. I mean, that, that I think we can all talk about.
Yeah, and that's the whole piece that we had with the negotiation, because that's the biggest chunk of everything.
Right.
You know, coming together, determining that, Mike and I going with the team for the negotiations to move that forward. So, yeah.
The other one is, I had here is health insurance covered. We've got it in at ten percent. Is that where it is? I don't know that.
No, we talked about that last week. The increase was three point nine percent. No, I'm sorry, the reduction was point nine percent. We made those changes, but we also had to make two adjustments because of changes of benefit elections over the last time. So it was.
The proposed healthcare plan that the, that the committee worked on?
Our, our proposed healthcare plan continues to be Cigna School Care. That is what we are, the rates that we've been provided, and that's what's in the budget. And that is a not, point nine percent decrease over last year, and those adjustments are already in your budget.
So the, the result of the benefit study committee, of which we haven't heard any, the board.
Yeah, Kim's updated.
And there, there's gonna be a presentation at the December sixth meeting.
Okay, so here's my question. Do, I mean, do we know what the healthcare plans are for next year?
That's what you said, Cigna.
Yeah.
No, no, I'm talking about the design of the plans, because we don't know.
We, we, right now, are working with the existing plans.
It's part of the, the negotiation process.
I, maybe I should have just said that.
It is.
But, so my question is, that could be different based on the, on the contract. Is that right?
Well, they can't discuss that yet.
No, I, I said it could, it could be different. Right.
It also varies depending on whether or not people opt in or opt out.
No, no, it's not what I mean. What I, what, I, as I understand, there's a redesign of the healthcare, but you've looked at some different options.
We absolutely have, yes.
And those options were presented to the union and they accepted or didn't accept.
It's part of the whole.
And my only question is, is it correct now that there is a, a, a ten percent increase?
There is no ten percent increase in your budget. The rates projected for next year are point nine percent increase, or decrease, and we made those adjustments from, be one of your budget to the current version.
Cause you did, we did have a piece of paper that said increase by ten percent, but then they, they fixed it last week.
Because the rates came out, the rates came out.
Yeah.
On the current plan.
Yes, and that is all we can do.
And that's all we can currently do.
Because that's the, the, the agreement we're underneath at, at current, at present.
Any change would have to be all or, all or nothing change.
Okay, those are my thoughts.
Okay. Ingrid, did you have any input on anything?
Um, no further questions about it, no.
And mine is basically the same. I had, um, I started the increase of one percent to support staff base and three percent to administration pool. I'm wondering if we could ask that to be set off, and we can focus on the teachers this year? Get them taken care of, get everybody into at least a living wage before we give everybody increases?
I'd like to look at the bus, um, maybe with parking, it wouldn't be as crowded, so do we need that bus? Can we look at all the routes to make sure that they're, I mean, this, everything's changed with the golf course, and with all these new, they don't come down my way, but, I mean, that's, there's two kids that probably will be coming by, getting on that bus soon. Um, and then I looked at the pair of Velax. And then I also looked at the full-time custodian, can we make do with what we have, so we get everything set?
Kim, I'll get a list too, but I, I think we're kind of, I, I don't think, what am I saying? You know, I spent some time putting this thing together, going line item.
Right. Right.
And I think, um, we need to make a decision as to whether we're gonna, as a process, use line item discussions, or an overall, or an overall budget reduction. And then we're all on the same page, 'cause now we're not, I mean, I've got a whole list of.
Right, so we kinda, we, I, what I'm trying to do is tell Meredith, this is what I'm thinking, this is where I'm going with this.
But the other folks haven't done this.
Okay, but Ingrid said she didn't have anything.
I think I put my things through and, uh, some questions earlier, a month or so ago.
Yeah.
I mean, and, 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 you know, my, my only concern with evaluating things is, one, being in the, the nits and lice, but also, if I say no to a bus, or yes to a bus, what am I saying no to? I don't have the smarts to know what the best alternative for that is.
Yeah.
Or, you know, if, if, when we look at the saxophones, or whatever the instrument is, I'm not prepared or able to justify, or say yay or nay to saxophones. Because I don't have that kind of expertise, so my mind says, um, you know, give the fe- and Al, you can give your feedback, 'cause Elizabeth's given hers. I would say, you have the feedback, Meredith, from the board, if we look at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars off the increase, come back to us and say, where will that be, does that make sense?
I think that's what I was looking for, just like giving ideas, again, it's, my thing is, what's the least impact on the kids?
Yeah.
And what can we, what can we eliminate?
I don't wanna be a stickler here, but, wait a minute, guys, we've got two people that are talking about, they've gone through the budget, and tried to, I don't know whether Mike has or not.
I mean, I, I went through the budget and identified stuff too.
I went through too, and I sent mine in an email a while back.
Yeah, I absolutely.
So there are no reductions after the last meeting we have that you think are appropriate?
I asked my questions about what they were, I think it's appropriate to have a review if we need to reduce this, if a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is gonna drop everybody's tax rate by ten, seven cents.
Twenty.
Twenty cents.
Twenty cents, twenty cents. What, that's what it does for the taxpayer, what does it do for our schools?
And Al, my, my mindset on this, when I came to that number, was looking at a, at a list similar to Elizabeth's or yours, what are the dollar figures for these things? And that gave me the baseline for my number, so I've, I've sort of done the same thing.
So you've got a number?
Yes, I, I, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And?
And then I would ask, I would say, some.
I didn't understand.
Yes, yes, I.
And Mike's got a number?
I don't know if Mike has a number.
Yeah, I don't know.
But I think that if, if we give a number, my thought was, if we give a number or a percentage, and say, between now and the next meeting, come back to us and, and tell us what these change, what this hundred and fifty thousand dollars difference looks like.
Because we can get a really quick fix on what that's gonna do to the tax rate.
Yes.
So that the taxpayers know that we're looking for a better rate for them.
So we're.
What happens to our kids when we do that for our taxpayers?
Yes.
So we're negotiating a number, we're not negotiating.
Not even negotiating, just.
I mean, that's what we've gotta give her a number.
No, it's just, I'm just, I'm just suggesting, and a hundred and fifty thousand, as I said, was based on some of the items in here that were on Elizabeth's list as well. I got to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and sometimes I went up to two hundred, then I put it back to a hundred and fifty thousand. And so then my simple mind says, if we, if we make a request to reduce it by that amount, what, what is the impact on the students gonna be?
I'm gonna ask one more question, and then I'm gonna.
Please.
Beg out. Elizabeth has recommended holding off a three percent administrative pool increase, what does that save? And wait a minute, guys, you said you have a number.
That's not one of my things.
Do you?
See, well, I, I can, I can get it, I will.
Do you have a number?
I have a number, but it's, like, mine changes, it likes, much like Kim's. But again, I say these things, I look at that, that doesn't impact my kids, so it's the first thing, I'm like, gone, you know? So then I'm, and Velax, I look at Velax, and I think, these are independent kids, they're self-motivated, do they need somebody there, it would be nice to have somebody there, we don't have anybody there. That has to go, like, that's how I kinda, so is there a number, I can't, I think I, I don't know, did I get a hundred and thirty thousand, that's as far as I got. It was forty two.
What's a three percent savings, um, sorry?
Um, if we went to zero, it would be forty-two, oh, hold on, I had the number. This includes any hopes for retirement, FICA, forty-two, four ninety-five.
And a one percent increase to support staff?
Oh, um, so, it would still be a step.
But that, and that's like a. Yeah.
I'd have to, I don't have that readily available.
And that's like, that's almost like just an increase, not even, I don't know.
Across a number of accounts.
And I mean, I think, I think with that particular one, we have to remember also that the superintendent is the person who, who determines that ultimately.
Yeah.
What we're determining is how much money will be in that bucket.
Okay.
Um, it's not the allocation of said bucket.
So what I.
Sorry, I, can you clarify that, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Like, with the three percent increase, I, I would not say X number of supportive employees getting a two point five percent increase versus one.
So the three percent is only in the administrative pool.
Right.
Um, at this point, and that's budgeted on your total salary for, salaries for administrators, if you were to put in three percent.
Right.
In the past, that has come before the board for approval, um, and the one percent to support staff would be a one percent to the scale, so that would be across the board.
Right.
That, that's how they're proposed.
Yeah. And there are a number of people at the top of the scale, and if you recall, even last year, we came back and asked if we could do something for those people who would be
'Cause they otherwise would not have stepped.
Not getting anything, 'cause they're at the top, so.
Right.
Yes.
So, my understanding has, has been embellished based on the fact that you really looked at that hundred and fifty and not just grabbed it.
Yeah, no, I, I.
And if I look at my numbers, um, they're higher than that.
Okay.
Um. I, you know, I went as deeply in, in, in terms of holding off some replacements on, you know, from tax, it's a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars in there.
But then you, remember, the question is, what's the impact on the kids, look at things that won't have an impact on the kids.
Well, but I'm just telling you what, you know, I'm not a.
And that's where it comes into, maybe we need to spend the hundred and seventy-eight thousand to get the Chromebooks, to get so-and-so, but again, just like with the saxophones, I don't have that information.
Right, yeah.
So, that's, that's, that's where I came, it wasn't this, I just pulled a number out of my, out of the air, Al, it was based on some data.
So, um, I'm gonna just go along with.
So, why don't we, Meredith, if this is amenable to you, why don't we look at reducing the budget by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
And what percent is that?
It's twenty cents off the, well, percentage of the budget?
Hmm.
I have a second question.
One fifty out of five forty-five.
Seven percent.
Oh, I don't.
No, no, it's sig- much more significant than that, it's almost a, yeah, it's almost a third, so it's twenty-five percent anyway.
It's, it's.
Yeah. But, yeah, yeah, that's what I was gonna say, two, twenty-five and thirty percent, yeah.
It's almost, yeah, twenty-seven percent.
You know, and it, it might be that they go back and they say, this is not doable for these reasons. And that might be the reality of the situation, or it is doable, and these are the ways that it's doable, so I think that's sort of where we are. So, my thought is, we had some tentative meetings scheduled for the next few weeks. My, with, with Thanksgiving coming up next week, we need to have the budget to the Budget Committee by that first week of December. Um, by the third, would it make sense for us to add a meeting on the twenty-ninth, which is a Thursday, at seven, to revisit this again? And, um, with the, with the, the changes that we have requested, um, and the, the information for that, and then hopefully proceed with the budget adoption that night to give it to the, the Budget Committee on the next Monday, on the third.
And you want that seven o'clock?
Yes, seven o'clock on the twenty-ninth, does that work?
Yeah.
Al, does that work for you? Meredith?
It's going to where, when?
The twenty-ninth.
Twenty ninth.
Because I think with that, with the shortened week next week, that gives people ample time to really scour this and go over it and give us, um, reasons, reasoned thoughts about things. So.
Provides us time to come together as a team and discuss the priorities.
Yes. Yes, that's, thank you, Meredith. Yes, please do. If I can articulate things, it'd be good tonight, but my tongue is.
I was articulating what our process would be.
Thank you. So, we will plan to meet on the twenty-ninth at seven to review the reduction that we have requested and the changes therein, and then hopefully, um, approve the budget.
When is the teacher's contract gonna be potentially approved?
We hope to have it for you at the December meeting, if all goes according to plan.
December?
Six. Any other thoughts about this, do we feel okay with this process moving forward as is? Um, any questions pertaining to that? If not, you know, and if, if there are any thoughts or questions in this intervening time, please share them so that we can get the, the most updated information on the twenty-ninth to make the most, um, reasoned decision that we can. Any more discussions, any more questions or discussion about the budget pieces?
I just, I wanna, I'd like to keep it the least impact on the kids, and I'd love to be able to get this CBA passed, and we're gonna need all the help we can get.
I would agree with both those things. Um, you know, I think it's gonna be an all-hands-on-deck thing for all this stuff, you know, I, I think the, the thing that, that we constantly talk about is, you know, we have the buildings, and we need to focus and, and remember what goes on in those buildings and the important things that go on there, and I think these things are obviously in line with both those concepts. Any other questions about anything? Meredith, anything from you, Lisa, anything we need to provide you at this point?
No.
I seek a motion to adjourn this budget workshop at eight o'clock.
Some moves are made.
Motion from Ms. McKinney, second from Mr. Zink, to adjourn the meeting, the work session at eight o'clock. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 Aye, meeting adjourned.